There's the call.
Just give me back. I think there's absolutely no three bars per segment, so.
Yeah, you heard me. I don't care. So it says, Kirkland is six thirty. We're gonna call this meeting. Throw order, please. I just wanted. I can yell probably loud so you guys can hear me, but.
Your phone. There it is. Yeah. Very good.
Was that one?
The thank you person. All this, I just have a lot of.
Never turn. You're small. All right. So I wanted to say, turn your phones off. Mine's not off, but it is on airplane phones. So. So the third least can we get a real call, please?
Carter.
Here.
Ellis.
Here.
Jacob.
Here.
Oskar. Online. Lawrence.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Newville.
Here.
Ferretini.
Here.
Fredo. Cedar. Taylor. Or.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can make the motion to have council members together, Fredo and Cedar.
Okay. Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Call favor.
Aye.
opposed? Here's, okay. We'll dispatch with the pledge of allegiance. Say it in your heart. But there's no flag. And then we'll go.
Really, it's like, well, can we just at least stand up and say the pledge anyway?
Say it again. I think we're not taking it. Which had a little flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I can't see very clearly for which states. One nation under God, in thy name it is called. Thank you. And now can we give the council president Morris?
I have a motion to overturn its agenda.
Thank you.
Then moved in second. Is there any conference or discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Let's see. We'll just go right into public comments. Please keep your comments down to three minutes and save your special area you'd like.
Got it. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Yeah. All right. I guess I'm gonna have to read this again. Again, except for people when they only read parts of things. And that's what I did the other night. I only read part of what I should have read all of them.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Can we get your name and word?
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Haywood, word four.
Thanks.
The public has the right to make personal, critical, and harsh remarks. That's the only part I read. I didn't finish it. Now I will finish it. Including vulgarity or obscenities. The courts have found that members of the local government must follow the rules of decorum. But members of the public are not bound by them. Now, do you understand that? Robert's rules only apply to you all, the elected. I don't have to follow that. I can say and do anything I want as long as it's not against the law. So I just want to be clear. And also, when you email your council members, it would be really polite to email us back, even if it is kiss my butt, anything. But just reply back. Let us know that you got our emails. Doug, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the email you sent.
Thanks.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Hopefully, we're clear on Robert's rules that you can't be telling us that we have to follow Robert's rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Let's bolt in word four. Appreciate Robert's rules. I appreciate civility. I don't, I'm just speaking to the crowd. I don't like it when we attack each other and call each other names. That's, that's just cheap. Anyway, the reason I stepped up is you guys have a $3 million budget problem. And I get it's a huge issue for you. And I think Aberdeen, we're not, we're not great. We're, but we're moving in the right direction. So I want to encourage you when you look at the budget coming up, fake scalpel, not sledgehammer. Okay? Think about where you can make incremental steps. They're gonna continue our trajectory and maybe raise it up a little bit. But not just, you know, if we tear this out, we're gonna solve part of our problem. And, and part of that is the EMS issue. If you make everybody pay the full amount on the EMS, you've just solved $2 million. A $2 million problem. Don't do that. I mean, I would love it. I mean, that's an easy thing to do. But the incremental step, charging $17.34 a month, that's $4 a week. That's a latte. That's one beer a week. Okay? I, you know, I know that there are people that are having a hard time, but, you know, heck, I'm gonna put off my next eyebrow piercing. Okay? To be able to make that money. But, but that's an incremental step that you can do, and that's a million dollars. So I just wanna encourage you to do that. And again, thank you. I don't have anything bad to say about anybody. So I think you're doing a good job. Keep it up.
Yeah, that's worth it.
Norm Klein, word three. And I appreciate what the gentleman said too about civility. And, you know, we're not trying to throw, you know, bombs here. But yeah, we have differences. There's gonna be a left and a right. And it is what it is. I would like to see a really a conservative approach to the budget, looking at all departments, not just throwing it on the taxpayer and say, hey, you're gonna have to suck it up. And that water bill is what it is. Again, I brought it up at the last meeting that it's an expensive thing for someone that's on a fixed income or a single parent household that's got a water meter at their house or, or they're in an apartment or a townhouse and they have to absorb when the rent goes up because the water bill went up. Or if you're in a homeowner like I am, it's gonna go up. I expect that. But like this gentleman said, incremental. You're not gonna fix 3 million overnight. But I want you guys to take a hard look at all the departments and not just say, oh, the taxpayer, the taxpayer, well, the county gets me, the feds get me, you guys get me. I just wanna see some moderation. And whatever that number is, I know you have the zero option. You got the platinum option. In the last week, you had kind of the middle of the road option. So I don't know. That's not, I'm not here to tell you how to, you know, cut, cut the budget, make it work. I don't believe, believe revenue enhancement should be the first option. I think it should be department by department. What can we cut? And try to keep the burden off of the taxpayer. That's all I'm asking for. I hope that makes sense. All right? And I'm not trying to be, you know, crazy about it. But I think I've been consistent every time I talk to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? All right. Seeing that, we'll, we'll move on to council president Morrison with consent agenda.
Moving to for tonight's consent agenda, that includes minutes from the May 22 meeting.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Here's, okay. We'll dispatch with the pledge of allegiance. Say it in your heart. But there's no flag. And then we'll go.
Really, it's like, well, can we just at least stand up and say the pledge anyway?
Say it again. I think we're not taking it. Which had a little flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. I can't see very clearly for which states. One nation under God, in thy name it is called.
Thank you.
And now can we give the council president Morrison?
I have a motion to overturn its agenda.
Thank you.
Then moved in second. Is there any conference or discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It passes. Let's see. We'll just go right into public comments. Please keep your comments down to three minutes and save your special area you'd like.
Got it. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah. All right. I guess I'm gonna have to read this again. Again, except for people when they only read parts of things. And that's what I did the other night. I only read part of what I should have read all of them.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Can we get your name and word?
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Haywood, word four.
Thanks.
The public has the right to make personal, critical, and harsh remarks. That's the only part I read. I didn't finish it. Now I will finish it. Including vulgarity or obscenities. The courts have found that members of the local government must follow the rules of decorum. But members of the public are not bound by them. Now, do you understand that? Robert's rules only apply to you all, the elected. I don't have to follow that. I can say and do anything I want as long as it's not against the law. So I just want to be clear. And also, when you email your council members, it would be really polite to email us back, even if it is kiss my butt, anything. But just reply back. Let us know that you got our emails. Doug, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the email you sent.
Thanks.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Hopefully, we're clear on Robert's rules that you can't be telling us that we have to follow Robert's rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Let's bolt in word four. Appreciate Robert's rules. I appreciate civility. I don't, I'm just speaking to the crowd. I don't like it when we attack each other and call each other names. That's, that's just cheap. Anyway, the reason I stepped up is you guys have a $3 million budget problem. And I get it's a huge issue for you. And I think Aberdeen, we're not, we're not great. We're, but we're moving in the right direction. So I want to encourage you when you look at the budget coming up, fake scalpel, not sledgehammer. Okay? Think about where you can make incremental steps. They're gonna continue our trajectory and maybe raise it up a little bit. But not just, you know, if we tear this out, we're gonna solve part of our problem. And, and part of that is the EMS issue. If you make everybody pay the full amount on the EMS, you've just solved $2 million. A $2 million problem. Don't do that. I mean, I would love it. I mean, that's an easy thing to do. But the incremental step, charging $17.34 a month, that's $4 a week. That's a latte. That's one beer a week. Okay? I, you know, I know that there are people that are having a hard time. But, you know, heck, I'm gonna put off my next eyebrow piercing. Okay? To be able to make that money. But, but that's an incremental step that you can do, and that's a million dollars. So I just wanna encourage you to do that. And again, thank you. I don't have anything bad to say about anybody. So I think you're doing a good job. Keep it up.
Yeah, that's worth it.
Norm Klein, word three. And I appreciate what the gentleman said too about civility. And, you know, we're not trying to throw, you know, bombs here. But yeah, we have differences. There's gonna be a left and a right. And it is what it is. I would like to see a really a conservative approach to the budget, looking at all departments, not just throwing it on the taxpayer and say, hey, you're gonna have to suck it up. And that water bill is what it is. Again, I brought it up at the last meeting that it's an expensive thing for someone that's on a fixed income or a single parent household that's got a water meter at their house or, or they're in an apartment or a townhouse and they have to absorb when the rent goes up because the water bill went up. Or if you're in a homeowner like I am, it's gonna go up. I expect that. But like this gentleman said, incremental. You're not gonna fix 3 million overnight. But I want you guys to take a hard look at all the departments and not just say, oh, the taxpayer, the taxpayer, well, the county gets me, the feds get me, you guys get me. I just wanna see some moderation. And whatever that number is, I know you have the zero option. You got the platinum option. In the last week, you had kind of the middle of the road option. So I don't know. That's not, I'm not here to tell you how to, you know, cut, cut the budget, make it work. I don't believe, believe revenue enhancement should be the first option. I think it should be department by department. What can we cut? And try to keep the burden off of the taxpayer. That's all I'm asking for. I hope that makes sense. All right? And I'm not trying to be, you know, crazy about it. But I think I've been consistent every time I talk to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? All right. Seeing that, we'll, we'll move on to council president Morrison with consent agenda.
Moving to for tonight's consent agenda, that includes minutes from the May 22 meeting.
Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Being that, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Passes. All right. I'll try, mayor's report, I'll try and keep this like kind of small. But I have a little letter I wrote. I'm sorry. I'd like to write. So before we get too much into this meeting, I just wanted to take a minute to apologize to the council members and to our residents for starting off my mayoral experience with the city, with walls built around me. My attentions were being dominated by creating defenses against constant, I'm more of the attacks on my personal life. Instead of jumping into my job and working for a community, I allowed my experiences as a childhood to get in the way of reality and cloud my judgment. I allowed bullies to work their hate on me and to get me worked up to the point of feeling that I had to defend myself on social media. With each defensive comment I made, it only opened the door for more hateful comments back. The algorithms on social media quickly brought in more haters to feed the comment stream. Haters from other states and even other countries chimed in. It didn't take me long to decide to disconnect myself from social media and pages that try and set folks against each other, making it a test against you kind of a thing. I received a large number of calls and letters from folks who are sitting back and watching our city council be rude and unprofessional in their personal attacks on me, each other, and basically anybody who dares to have a different opinion. I hear how Cozy has problems, but it's working it out. How McCleary has problems, but they're trying to work it out. And how Aberdeen City Council keeps digging itself deeper into becoming this completely dysfunctional organization. I, for one, am going to try to reset my clock. And I realized that we can never get anything done for our citizens if all of our time is spent fighting about every little thing. I realize that we're here to conduct the city's business, not worry about folks, kind of what they do on their time off. I realize that once the council votes to go in a direction that we all need to find strength in ourselves to go in that direction, that's the way the council has voted. Even if we voted to go in the other direction. That, my friends, is a hard thing for most of us to set our teeth into. But it's the way that this country works. We live in a democracy, in our, in our land intimidation, bullying. They're not things to be proud of. The person with the largest muscles or the biggest gun isn't necessarily the smartest person in the room. Making women, elderly, or meek folks feel physically unsafe because we didn't like the way they voted is absolutely not the path that the citizens of Aberdeen put us in office to do. Our community is watching everything we do, the rest of the country, and state setback and justice by what they see and hear us do. That includes your social media. That includes talking on the radio. That includes voting off to the newspaper. We're all free to act and do whatever we want to. But we have to realize that the world is watching us and how we act and how we conduct ourselves. So we don't have to be nice and hit social and say hi to each other. But cordiality and, and manners and respect, that should be what leads us through what we're doing. Okay? So that's enough about that. I apologize again that I got distracted from just worrying about my community, worrying about myself and what other people saw. That's not really what's important. Our community is important.
I think Aberdeen, we're not, we're not great. We're, but we're moving in the right direction. So I want to encourage you when you look at the budget coming up, fake scalpel, not sledgehammer. Okay, think about where you can make incremental steps. They're gonna continue our trajectory and maybe raise it up a little bit. But not just, you know, if we tear this out, we're gonna solve part of our problem. And, and part of that is the EMS issue. If you make everybody pay the full amount on the EMS, you've just solved $2 million. A $2 million problem. Don't do that. I mean, I would love it. I mean, that's an easy thing to do. But the incremental step, charging $17.34 a month, that's $4 a week. That's a latte. That's one beer a week. Okay, I, you know, I know that there are people that are having a hard time, but, you know, heck, I'm gonna put off my next eyebrow piercing. Okay, to be able to make that money. But, but that's an incremental step that you can do, and that's a million dollars. So I, I just wanna encourage you to do that. And, and again, thank you. I don't have anything bad to say about anybody, so. I think you're doing a good job. Keep it up.
Yeah, that's worth it.
Norm Klein, Ward three. And I, I appreciate what the gentleman said too about civility. And, you know, we're not trying to throw, you know, bombs here, but yeah, we have differences. There's gonna be a left and a right. And it is what it is. I would like to see a really a conservative approach to the budget, looking at all departments, not just throwing it on the taxpayer and say, hey, you're gonna have to suck it up and that water bill is what it is. Again, I brought it up at the last meeting that it's an expensive thing for someone that's on a fixed income or a single parent household that's got a water meter at their house or, or they're in an apartment or a townhouse and they have to absorb when the rent goes up because the water bill went up. Or if you're in a homeowner like I am, it's gonna go up. I, I expect that. But like this gentleman said, incremental, you're not gonna fix 3 million overnight. But I want you guys to take a hard look at all the departments and not just say, oh, the taxpayer, the taxpayer. Well, the county gets me, the, the feds get me, you guys get me. I just wanna see some moderation. And whatever that number is, I know you have the zero option. You've got the platinum option. In the last week, you had kind of the middle of the road option. So I, I don't know. That's not, I'm not here to tell you how to, you know, cut, cut the budget, make it work. I don't believe, believe revenue enhancement should be the first option. I think it should be department by department. What can we cut? And try to keep the burden off of the taxpayer. That's all I'm asking for. I hope that makes sense. All right, and I'm not trying to be, you know, crazy about it. But I think I've been consistent every time I talk to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? All right, seeing that, we'll, we'll move on to Council President Morrison with consent agenda.
I'd like to, for tonight's consent agenda, that goes minutes from the May 22nd meeting.
Second. Then move in second. Is there any discussion? Being that all in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Pass this. All right, I'll try, Mayor's report, I'll try and keep this like kind of small, but I have a little letter I wrote. I'm, I'm sorry. I'd like to write. So before we get too much into this meeting, I just wanted to take the minute to apologize to the council members and to our residents for starting off my mayoral experience with the city with walls built around me. My attentions were being dominated by creating defenses against constant and more attacks on my personal life. Instead of jumping into my job and working for a community, I allowed my experiences as a child to get in the way of reality and cloud my judgment. I allowed bullies to work their hate on me and to get me worked up to the point of feeling that I had to defend myself on social media. With each defensive comment I made, it only opened the door for more hateful comments back. The algorithms on social media quickly brought in more haters to feed the comment stream. Haters from other states and even other countries chimed in. It didn't take me long to decide to disconnect myself from social media and pages that try and set folks against each other, making it a test against you kind of a thing. I received a large number of calls and letters from folks who are sitting back and watching our city council be rude and unprofessional in their personal attacks on me, each other, and basically anybody who dares to have a different opinion. I hear how Cozy has problems, but it's working it out. How McCleary has problems, but they're trying to work it out. And how Aberdeen City Council keeps digging itself deeper into becoming this completely dysfunctional organization. I, for one, am going to try to reset my clock. And I realize that we can never get anything done for our citizens if all of our time is spent fighting about every little thing. I realize that we're here to conduct the city's business, not worry about folks, kind of what they do on their time off. I realize that once the council votes to go in a direction that we all need to find strength in ourselves to go in that direction, that's the way the council has voted. Even if we voted to go in the other direction, that, my friends, is a hard thing for most of us to set our teeth into. But it's the way that this country works. We live in a democracy in our, in our land intimidation, bullying. They're not things to be proud of. The person with the largest muscles or the biggest gun isn't necessarily the smartest person in the room. Making women elderly or meek folks feel physically unsafe because we didn't like the way they voted is absolutely not the path that the citizens of Aberdeen put us in office to do. Our community is watching everything we do, the rest of the country, and state setback and justice by what they see and hear us do. That includes your social media. That includes talking on the radio. That includes voting off to the newspaper. We're all free to act and do whatever we want to. But we have to realize that the world is watching us and how we act and how we conduct ourselves. So we don't have to be nice and hit social and say hi to each other. But cordiality and, and manners and respect, that should be what leads us through what we're doing. Okay, so that's enough about that. I apologize again that I got distracted from just worrying about my community, worrying about myself and what other people saw. That's not really what's important. Our community is important. That's, that's one other thing quickly. On the table over where that one little lone microphone is sitting, I put some Mr. Duck stickers for anybody who has kids in their families. It's, it doesn't seem like much, but it can save a kid's life if you have little kids that, that don't know what that sticker is. So they're there to take if you'd like to take them. And that's my comment for right now.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, Councilmember Prado logged on at 6:39.
Thank you. Now we'll go to council reports. Do I have any council members who'd like to make a report? Councilperson Ellis?
Thank you. Do I have the mic? I do. Um, and on the agenda towards the end is under special agenda items are appointments for new Seaport Board members. And I've had the privilege of serving as a board member for the Seaport for the last few years. And we're looking to add some talent. And, and this will be really fabulous about the Seaport a lot. There's quite a bit going on out there. The Seaport is a site that, that's been full of toxic chemicals and leftovers from when Warehouser was in operation there. So a lot of attention has been spent to getting that cleaned up and much progress has been made. But there's also the lots of possibilities with that site. And, and it's a pretty exciting project to be a part of. I'm looking forward to adding the new members later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And do anybody else have a comment? No? Okay, let's move on to staff reports. Administrator Collins, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Last week, one of the more important meetings that we had was with the City of Tacoma or Tacoma Power. We are looking at the future of the Wainucci Dam. For those of you who aren't aware, the city owns the Wainucci Dam. And Tacoma has, the City of Tacoma, Tacoma Power has a power generation plant just below the dam. And they use the water from, from the dam in order to generate power. So we have, we are co-licenses with the federal government. And we will be looking at what our co-license will look like for 2037. It takes at least eight years to apply for this license. And to get it prepared, it requires a lot of details. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that we started that conversation with them and we will continue that conversation for a long time. So, and then what the future of Aberdeen's ownership of the dam could look like. And so again, we'll, we will be working with them on what the future will look like for both of our organizations with the dam. I also wanted to remind all of you that the Badges and Brews event is happening on June 4th from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Aberdeen Starbucks. The Starbucks located on the east side of town. You're all welcome to come out there and test, you know, you can test out new drinks that they have. They also have little fun, you know, games that they're going to play as well as me. All of the different first responders that will be there that will include not only Aberdeen's finest, but also the Sheriff's Department and City of Oakham and all the different law enforcement and emergency services groups. So I encourage all of you to come out and try, try it out.
Should be fun.
Any questions? Right, thank you.
Thank you. Need the director's half report? No? All right. Who's running for, okay, okay, so we'll go to councilperson.
Thank you. There was no finance committee meeting tonight. And on the agenda is discussion and recommendation for updating the fees and charges for the city's ambulance and emergency services utility as allowed in AMC So we're, we've got this time to continue the discussion from our last meeting on the EMS rates.
Could I make a little comment? Yeah, so I was thinking about the EMS rates and that I'm thinking maybe we could have a committee of council members. Each ward would select their council person that they want to be in charge of that committee. And then you guys meet and come back with a recommendation to the council. It wouldn't be me selecting a, a committee. It would be each, each ward putting their person forward that they'd like to represent their ward. But anyway, that's just an idea.
Thank you.
Yes.
We were presented with three options, so I don't know why we can't just vote on option three. My position remains the same and with all due respect to Mr. Bolton. And I really appreciate getting up every meeting and speaking your piece. But the, the one latte, one beer a week, eyebrow pierce, same thing. If you talk to the seniors that I've talked to the last couple of weeks that are scared to death about $4 a week, I don't think you'd be so pathetic about it. They really are scared. Like, about $4 is a lot to come up, but your social security isn't going up and every other bill that you have is. So my position remains the same. We were presented with three options. The council voted down option two. I would like the opportunity to vote on option three.
Thank you, ma'am.
That wasn't a motion.
You disagree.
I'm option, I'll be voting on option three.
Good, I seconded it. Okay, person seven, is there more discussion on, on this? Councilperson Ellis?
Yeah, I, I think in the same way that households are concerned about their expenses going up by whatever amount it may be. I am just as terrified about our city having a budget that's built on money that's not there. We're currently running a $3 million deficit to go ahead with option three, which is essentially carrying on as a status quo. Doesn't help us address our deficit at all. We know that either way, whatever option, the city is going to have to make some cuts. And I, I like the idea that the mayor has proposed of having a subcommittee look at this because hand in hand with setting our rates is going to be coming up with where do we make these cuts? And we really should be doing both together rather than saying, here are the rates now, we'll figure the, the other side out. This, we don't have the general fund to sustain option three beyond six years at best. And that leaves us with absolutely no reserves. And I think we, as much as we owe our careful consideration and and care to all of our citizens, that, that comes with applying that to being fiscally sound when, when we're looking at the whole budget. And I, I like the idea of a conservative approach. I don't like the idea of running a deficit. And I recognize that we are going to have to look across departments. We're going to look hard at where we can make more effective decisions, efficient decisions in our budgeting. And I know that our city administrator and our finance consultant have been giving us some thought. But that would really benefit from, from having council weigh in on what that's gonna look like. It's, you say that, okay, public, we're gonna have to make some cuts. Doesn't, doesn't mean a whole lot. But for us to have cuts identified so that people know, okay, we, we go this route, here's the real costs and services and doing business. I think that's a whole lot more meaningful. And I would urge my fellow council members to pick up the mayor and his recommendation that we have a subcommittee and, and figure this out.
Why couldn't we take option two and just reduce the amount a little bit?
That would be, that's a committee could do that.
Yeah, instead of going to number three or number two, compromise in between the two.
It also has an adjusted rate of increase. Oh, I'm sorry, cheap.
Yes, thank you. So that is an option that the council can do is find a fourth option, if you will. And by doing that, we would, to be, to take a quote out of the council member Ellis's wording there is to be financially feasible, or I should say, again, you gotta write a word. She's, anyways, yeah. We'll want to send that back to the consultants to see how that plays with the structured use of the reserves and EMS that we have established, which, which is fine. I just wanna give the warning of we are kind of at the limit of what we hired the consultants to do. So this is gonna cost us yet more money coming up with another option because we are again, like I said, at the end of their contract with us, both time and cost.
So couldn't we just improve option three this year and revisit this next year?
Yeah, well, we, I think.
We can't visit it annually.
No, but I think councilperson, right.
Please.
That's already had his hand down.
Oh, that's fine, no. I was gonna dig it back a little more on what Ellis was saying, Councilmember Ellis. Maybe you may not know this, maybe you do this great. You know, I have six kids, well, seven, one didn't make it. And a wife, mortgage, I'm everything, and I'm currently unemployed. And, you know, I'll share some stories with you. Why not, people made sure to make sure the public knew about it. You know, three weeks after we lost our son, and it was horrible, just the most tragic thing. I, you know, I spent 36 hours in jail. And I'm going by and by, everything, you know, everything's taken care of. And I'll happily discuss and share stories with anyone, whatever, did you know? Anyways, but I'm getting asked that and having a very difficult time myself finding a job. And I'm a skilled tradesman and I have 16 years' experience. I've solved thousands of furnaces, AC units, dug work, I sized houses. It's like, it doesn't matter. I mean, I've done it all. But because of that, I'm having a hard time finding a job. And I can tell you right now, I'm not the one, okay? I'm not the one. And so I, I feel like I speak for a lot of the public because a lot of the public does talk to me because I'm just a really blue collar guy, just like them, okay? So when you talk about making cuts, fine, make the cuts, okay? But don't you even look at the hourly employees. Don't you even look at them. They can keep their jobs. If you need to make cuts, make the cuts. That's fine. Because right now, look at downtown, okay? There's a lot of cuts downtown we can make. Look at those buildings that are just falling apart and happening for years. Look at that camp that's on at the bridge, we're just hemorrhaging money for it. All right, why? Why are we, why are we doing that? That doesn't make any sense. So you want to increase the cost of living here to take care of the people that need to be taken care of, right? Which includes you. Well, absolutely, I know that, and thank you. But it seems really silly to have people fork over more money. You know, so many residents here, they don't feel safe, okay? They don't, all right? And they're, they're scared to have to call 911, all right? Because this hospital has a reputation that's been around. They have a subject. It is a subject because this is, you know, I'm talking about the people, the people that elected us and the people that we represent, all right? So we need to just stop talking like people can afford this, okay? And if you have to make cuts, you make cuts. I've done construction my whole life. You run skeleton crews and you have to. That's just the way it is, okay? And, you know, now we're talking, are these volunteers right here? They are. Thank you, thank you. Thanks for your comments. So I wasn't sure if we're talking about, you know, definitely making cuts and then bringing on more people. Maybe that just didn't make sense to me. But, um, yeah, it is, it may seem like just, you know, a couple bucks, but it's incredibly impactful on a lot of people. I stay up every night stressing, you know? And then, and then maybe you don't sleep. And like I said, you know, I fly everywhere. I go to places at 8:00 in the morning, you know? Like, hey, you know, more writers, wonderful. They've helped us. They have. And it is fantastic. I don't bad mouth people like that, you know? And a lot of people, you know, with the reputation, I, I'm just telling you right now, we, we do need to work together. And we need to stop pretending that, that we can't make improvements downtown to help generate more income for this town, to lessen the burden on the residents. You know, we need, we need to look more into that because that's what we have. You know, and, and I, option two, option three, or it's just, it feels insulting. It really does. It feels like we are insulting the community by that. It's like, we haven't taken care of you for years, so now we want more money from you. And that's, that's, that's not right. So, but I'd say that.
I appreciate your, your, your concerns, council member. And, and what I'm urging us to do is to, is to look further at this and, and actually come up with a package so that you understand as the, as would every citizen, taxpayer in Aberdeen, that here's, here's the option we're suggesting. And here's what it may mean in terms of less service or cuts to spend or cuts to projects. I think we need to be real and upfront about that. And right now, we just don't know. We are running a $100 million business here. Our general fund may not be that much, but the city budget is certainly that much. And it takes having knowledgeable, dedicated department heads, and I include our city administrator in that, to help chart out a course through this challenge. And it's, and it's not something that should be done casually. We need to be thoughtful in this. And, and listening to our constituents is certainly a big part of that. I've been listening to mine. But I, I want to better understand, what does this mean? You know, what's, here's, here's the side of what it does to the EMS rates. But what does this mean for the rest of the budget in terms of an impact? The decision we're making now, we're, it's going to affect the city's financial strength going forward many, many years. And it's important for us to understand what that looks like.
I'd just like to point out, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, yeah, I'd just like to point out that when I was a kid, candy bars were five cents. And they went up. Every single thing, I don't know of a single thing, maybe a penny still gets a penny. But, you know, I could buy five pieces of candy for a penny when I was a kid. Everything's gone up. Us as a city have had to, every single thing the city buys costs more money. Every employee costs more money. I mean, I'm sure everybody in the city probably told me when the city started, didn't make $100,000. Now, that's like a, a salary. I'm for as a church pastor, and you know, I mean, you guys know how much I mean. It's nothing. So I have to go out there and look for every single job I do every single day. But I'm not here at the city. And I struggle for everything. And so I know I'm not one of these elite people. I'm saying, I just don't believe in spending money I don't have. We don't have the money to just cover the expenses for all our poor people. We just don't. And it could be really nice if we did, if our society was that kind of society where the top paid more and everybody was covered. But that's not the kind of society we are. The society we are is we're all at the bottom, most of us, and we're all having to kick each other and scratch and grab for every single dime that we can get to pay our bills and, and make it through. So I'm thinking as a city, we, we need to be financially responsible to our citizens and to ourselves. And the reality is subsidizing like we are right now with our general fund is not sustainable. And I think the committee would be a great thing because I think that rather than going with three and continuing to dig our hole deeper, and rather than go with one, which is going to get us caught up right away, we come up with a constructive, or the council does, come up with a constructive way that we could meet somewhere in between. And that's the way our society works the best is if we, if we don't just pick one way, but we come in together and say, it can't be your way, it can't be my way, but we can work in the middle and come up with a way to pay. That's why I think the committee would work.
Mr. Mayor, there's a motion on the floor, and I'd like to call the question, and I'd like to vote please.
May I ask a clarifying question? Just based on how the vote goes, I kind of know my marching order. Uh, because I've heard, uh, option three, then I, you know, what we've done before with the last option was following the five-year plan of the, of the consultants. Is that what I would be bringing forward just as that, but with option three?
And if you, if, if we can do it annually, why don't we revisit it in a year? I've mentioned that, I've mentioned that before, it was the option three and revisit it in a year. See how that can.
So I said, how, or you want to present it, if you want to present it in the.
So I would, I would defend my motion that we vote on approving option three and revisit in one year.
Second that. It's already been seconded, but that's the same thing. Yeah. Okay. So is there any more discussion?
What's the fee cost for bringing us back to ambulance?
Oh, the fee for the consultant? I honestly don't know what it would be for us to move forward. All the entire fee was thirty-eight thousand dollars for the study, sends that for the past six months. So, like I said, we're at that end, and I'm not sure what their rate would be for work outside the agreement. Okay, any more discussion?
That's another point. I ran, did the numbers using the utility rate comparison that we were given. And at the end of twenty-twenty-eight, using option three, there's a thirty-dollar and eighty-cent difference between that and the seventy-two dollars that is presented in option one for full cost recovery. So that's increasing, jumping up the rates, not two dollars, four dollars a month, but it, in twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine, those rates would go up an additional almost thirty-one dollars. And to me, as hard as it is to look at a, a rate increase of just under four dollars this year, thirty-one dollars is untenable. And we're kicking the can down the road without any real way to, to pay for that.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Again, I, I just would like to remind all of you that our revenues that we're bringing in, we are already behind on the first quarter, and that includes tax revenues. Our sales tax revenues were behind, and they're not keeping up with our expenses, what we budgeted for the year. You know, a, a, and again, the, this isn't just about the EMS rate itself. Seventy-nine percent of the people who use our EMS services are on Medicare or Medicaid. So we are subsidizing that the very people that, when you talk about certain people, but like, those are, those are probably the people that can't afford the twenty-dollar increase. So the very people that are probably using the service, we have seventy-nine percent of the people that are using EMS services on Medicare and Medicaid. That also includes the eleven percent that are homeless. Um, when we go down to the encampments, they use that service. And the majority of those folks are on some sort of state subsidy or federal subsidy subsidies so that the cost does get covered. We have to cover the rest of that. So we are providing service to people who need it, our most vulnerable citizens. I absolutely understand that. I'm going to need to come back to all of you to figure out how this should look in the future. Because we're going to look at about fifteen percent that we're going to have to cut from the budget. That's what three million dollars equates to, um, when we are trying to balance the budget for next year and what that could potentially look like. And at the end of the day, I know that there have been suggestions about grants of things like, you know, applying for one-time money. It's not the one-time money. The council last year approved a few contracts that included raises. Raises that don't even bring us to competitive pay, competitive wages. We are losing people constantly to Thurston County, to the I-five corridor, to Hopeway. Um, they have half the call volume. Why would anyone want to come to Aberdeen and work in Aberdeen when a nearby city has the same pay with half the call volume and not nearly the amount of trouble? It's very difficult to keep paramedics and, and police officers here. We just lost two more. So, um, these, these impacts, these not doing anything right now will impact the general fund in the future. That includes every single department will have to make sacrifices of some sort to reach that fifteen percent deficit. Every single department that touches the general fund, not the water department, not the sewer department, not those that are, are already funded, the enterprise funds, those that are impacted by the general fund will have to, we will have to find that. And I will come to all of you and find out, where would you like this money to come from? Because we can cut all the department heads, that's not even going to touch the three million dollars that we have to find. So I absolutely understand the outcry. I absolutely understand that. We are, and I know you said we're a hundred million dollar industry. We are a billion dollar industry. Billion. We are an organization. We are a business. We have to keep the doors open. I provided you with the survey. The reason why I conducted that survey was to find out the, the quality of life that people are experiencing. Overall, fire and police and the library system, oddly enough, all general funded, all general fund funded, got the highest scores. People are so happy with their EMS, fire and police services, and their library services, their park services, community development. Those are all general fund funded departments. So none, this is why all of you are here in the, in, in the city. You have absolutely hard decisions to make. But I, I just want you to also just be aware that past councils unfortunately have kicked the can down to all of you. That's why ten years later, we still have the same EMS rate because somebody did this to you guys. I'm so sorry that that happened. We absolutely can't kick it down another year. That's when we'll have to reevaluate the rates, and they may be higher. The cost of living, the cost of doing business, the cost of supplies, the cost of equipments, the cost of materials, all have gone up. All have gone up. You, all of you approved three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards a truck last, a fire truck last year. That only covers the chassis. These are million-dollar pieces of equipment that we have to replace because again, it's a twenty-year-old truck. It keeps getting kicked down to the council after. So I'm just wanting to just let you know. And, and when it comes to like the city of Hopeway, when we do comparisons to the city of Hopeway, the city of Hopeway has a levy. They actually pay what, what I, I worked it out with, with Chief Bolley. They pay about fifty-three dollars in their EMS, in their, in their, their fire. You know, when you take the levy, and then they have three property tax, taxes that they impose for a fire truck, for the east, the east campus fire station, and then another levy. And then, and then on top of it, just their regular EMS rate. So the grass isn't always greener. There are other options out there that we can consider. I, I do like the idea of having a utility rate, like advisory committee that could make a recommendation to all of you. But again, I just, I just wanted you to, I just have all, all of the facts and like how this could affect us. That the, the departments that we have currently that are one hundred percent funded by the general fund are police, community development, parks, our street division, which is a division of public works, our legal department, our library, and our municipal court. And then there are other places, parts of finance are general funded. So again, that's why we're all here. We have to make hard decisions. And, yeah, so we all have to make hard decisions and I just, you know, I just want you to be aware of the facts of what we're going to be looking, what, what we're going to be working toward that we build the budget for next year.
I have one more question. If we kick the can down the curve and wait until next year and approve option three, then do we pay another thirty thousand for another evaluation?
Another study?
Yes. Would we be starting over from square one?
So the purpose of the study is that we have, we have to pay for a study. We can't just arbitrarily just decide, oh, fifty dollars is the rate and have no proof to back that up. We hire professionals, rate structure professionals to build these rates for us based on a whole pile, a whole, a whole plethora of data that they compile to determine what we should be charging. And one of the things that they determined was that eighteen percent of our actual calls are related to fire. Eighty-two percent of our calls are related to EMS, are related to ambulatory services, EMS services. So that was something that we learned. And so we're trying, we have to switch, we have to switch our allocations to that. So your question is, do we have to pay for another study?
In a year, yes.
Maybe. We could potentially use the same numbers that they gave us for us to, we can bring these numbers back to you. Um, you may want us to look at different things, but the data that they're using, they can only provide facts. They can't just make up numbers. I know this because I tried. I was like, well, can we just charge them forty dollars and this? And he's like, well, you have to show me why we're charging forty dollars. So again, everything that they do, but at the end of the day, it's our, it's, or it's the council's decision, which direction to head. You can create a fourth option that is somewhere in the middle. You can make it so that instead of paying it over the course of five years, every year for five years, you can say we can charge one year, year, year one, year three, and year five. We can make it look any way that's palatable to all of you and palatable to your constituents. So that's why considering a, a utility rate advisory group might be worth it. And, and, and instead of using maybe, and the council would definitely be a part of it, but I would like to even take it further and propose that we use maybe community members who have some kind of background in business or have some sort of understanding of, of accounting principles, just minor accounting principles. They don't have to be. And that they bring forward. And each of you could choose your, each ward could choose who your representatives are, who your, and so that's kind of the, something to suggest, that's something that a lot of cities do, a lot of cities use as a, for rates. They have advisory councils or advisory committees to help guide them and make decisions when it comes to utility rates, when it comes to policy, like, and, you know, you, you guys all sit on, on different committees. But I think that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's your decision, but I, I, I do like the idea of a utility rate advisory committee that could help guide you. Um, we would be happy to help in informing them, giving them the entire picture of how the city operates. And, and the, going over the budget with them, going over operations with them, and then, and, and going over how utility rate structure works. Any, any information you feel is pertinent to helping them provide advice or a recommendation to all of you. So, I mean, that's, that's something for you to consider. I think that that could be done over the course of the rest of the year so that they could bring a recommendation to you guys by December to decide maybe for January or however you guys want to do it. I don't think it has to all be done today. I think we can, if you guys decide to go that route, they can make, you know, they, we can provide them all the information to digest. And here you go, here's all the information about the city, how it runs, how it operates. And then they can bring forward a recommendation, just a thought.
And then I would like to add really quick, just to answer, again, Councilmember Parachini's question about the rates and going back to the consultant. I'm fairly comfortable with if we stayed within the three options. You know, those have been established by the consultants. So bouncing between those as options, I, I feel very comfortable not having to go back for a study. Why I would get nervous is if we're creating option four, option five, option six. Uh, because again, like I said, they're structured in a way to use current funds. So.
Okay, so can we get the roll down?
It's kind of going from the leads of the question, but it was just, it's coming off of what a statement a citizen made during the last meetings about, they had a question about when an EMS call is made, is it standard for the fire truck to always follow the ambulance? That's been, that's been popping back in my head since they had a number one and no answer.
That's the same thing. Yeah, so it depends. It's, it's not the rule of thumb that every ambulance call gets a fire truck to, to follow. It depends on the call. There are medical calls that are more labor intensive that need more manpower than just the two people on the ambulance. You know, and the, the perfect one is a cardiac arrest. To run an effective cardiac arrest for resuscitation takes five to six people, and there's two on the ambulance. So, you know, and, and just building, even, hey, we need help moving a patient because we get older and our backs are and, you know, more manpower to, to move patients is safer. So different factors go into that.
I think a perfect example, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief. There was a medical situation with the bus, the transit bus recently, and they took the fire truck along. And the reason for doing that is in the event that there's another call, the guys can hop out, ha, they hop on the truck and go somewhere else. And then there was a fire directly at, at the grocery outlet, and they hopped on the truck and went to the fire. So that, that allows them to go to a fire in the event.
That makes a lot.
Yeah, so that's, that's why they bring the truck out. So.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense.
There are cities that have explored it. Actually, I've only heard of one city in California. I've, I've read up on this. And I don't know that, I, I don't know that it's.
The pennies they're shaving to, on fuel is not even compared to the cost of going all the way back to the station or every year or.
Right, right.
Or having someone die because they were miles away from a situation.
And that was the only city that I've really read that's doing that. But I'm happy to, like, but I thought, thank you.
Yeah, are we ready for the vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to throw up there. It's factual that a city spent over, what, two million dollars since twenty nineteen with the homeless issue. So that's two million dollars that could be in the bank. Um, and they state that hoping, you know, can jump over there while they don't have the same issue under the bridge that we do. Um, so I feel, oh, and then we're talking, it's thirty grand to have people, you know, professional look at all this, but we're spending that much on every cleanup. So it's, it's kind of obvious, you know, things that we can do better, that bring more business here to our downtown. So it's not a ghost town. And anybody reached out to Emmer because all the buildings are pretty rough. I mean, there's a lot of land, buildings there that could be used for jobs.
And make people use their property for what you want, that's good.
But what about the tradition we're in? Because I'm not, I think we're in crisis right now. So why can't we take action on that?
Yes, I speak regularly with Jerry Reeves, who is Terry Emmer's partner. And I, time and time again, express the difficulty that the city is having with their ownership and the way that they operate their buildings. I said, you are single-handedly destroying our city. I said those exact words to him. Um, with their ownership and the way that they operate their buildings. I said, you are single-handedly destroying our city. I said those exact words to him. Um, again, it just requires regular meetings with this individual. Um, we, I, we try, we have, find them, they are working towards a plan. We have plans in place for the Becker Building, um, and Director Lisa Scott can speak better to this. Um, but we do have plans for some of the vacant buildings that they have, so we try to work with them. We find them when we can. And um, they are included in the vacant building program. Um, but as Councilmember Parachini said, there's only so much that we can do. Um, they have rights as well. And none of you would want us to take their properties because that means we can take anybody's property. So, we just, we want to um. Work with the property owners as much as we can. He owns not only buildings here in, in Aberdeen, he owns. Last I heard was fifty-six buildings across Grace Harbor. So, we're not the only city kind of experiencing um issues with vacant buildings. His technical specifically.
It's clearly a, a safety issue. I mean, you've got uh where the loading dog sat right there, cones on the sidewalk, cause the buildings falling apart. Um, you have that other building right there by the beauty school, so I was even have a roof. Would, would, I, I said I've seen better buildings when I was in Iraq.
Right, I believe that he, I mean, we do have updates on those buildings, so I could definitely give you updates like them. If they, they are making movement, it's just slow going. Um, but they continue to make progress towards. Either tearing a building down or repairing the fact, the, um, the envelope of the building.
I'd rather, I'd rather pressure on them than get more money from the citizens.
Back to the EMS rates, um, Councilmember Hodgkins online and has a comment. Go ahead, Deb.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so having, you know, coming from the private sector and the high-tech industry especially. Um, we were in that industry for twenty-five years. It's really common for companies, you know, when their output no longer meets their input. To, you know, um, have layoffs and to make big changes and they're hard to do. Um, just like, you know, asking our taxpayers for more money. I am concerned about the, uh, you know, the poverty level that a lot of people struggle with in Aberdeen. And, and just having an easy fix and putting this off on them. I know a lot of people on council now are not responsible for the decision, you know, for the gateway center and the. Millions of dollars that were wasted in, in um, you know, buying land and, and the whole pursuit of, of that. Um, boondoggle, but I feel like we, you know, not to get into the weeds of all the different things that we would love to do. And plan to do, um, I just feel like there, we just need to get real about what we can afford to do. And, and um, start making some hard decisions. Um, you know, so, uh, I, I just hate to put it off onto people who. Are already struggling with the cost of living, you know, just exponentially going up the last four years. And uh, I think we need to, you know, make those hard decisions on what we can, what we can afford and what we can't afford. You know, as a city and, and get real about some of the things that we're involved in. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Voice mark, last one. This is kind of off topic, but more financial question that might give some insight on, on the situation right. The rail's expansion, what is the estimated revenue increase with that project? Will we see a relief from that begins? If we might be able to, you know, when we come back and relook at this later, will it be such an extreme? Versus we will see a significant increase with that expansion?
So, I don't know. Well, the rail separation project. Could potentially have positive, I think any new infrastructure could have potential positive impacts. Anything new that would bring to our city, I think could have positive impacts.
Not the rail separation or the rail expansion at the port.
The rail, well, the, the rail expansion of the port is gonna increase the amount of traffic, which should increase our revenue.
Ideally, yes.
Exactly. We're tripling the amount of traffic coming in.
So, the port, um, the funding mechanism, that part of the funding mechanism that the port use is called a tax increment financing. Um, route that they went. And what that means is that any increase in the property value of the port. And that's anticipated to be over two hundred and sixty million dollars over the course of the next, I don't know. Five years or something like that. That's what the, the anticipated property value is supposed to be. We don't get to see any of it. It will go towards the payment of that tax increment financing. So, it's a new, a relatively new. Approach to financing large infrastructure projects. And so, um, the only people, uh, the only organizations that will not receive or will not, their, their funding from the port's expansion. Will not be touched in your garden, um, the libraries and the schools.
Don't we receive direct sales tax lines? I mean, they're selling soybean. There's, there's a sale of transaction happening.
Yes.
Sales taxes.
Yes, I, I believe that we will see an increase, that, that would be the hope, so.
A hundred thousand, millions, what's the increase? Look at pennies?
Look, they, they did a presentation to the council here a while ago and they said it was in the millions as they were talking about. That would be significant for the city of Aberdeen's purchase.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, we, we should hopefully see an increase. Um, I don't know when they will really, when they will take off, so, um, it's all about.
Separation, that's right. The checks, the trains might start coming before the, the separation season.
Correct, they will, they will start coming before the separation would really like, so.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, a common question one more time. Thank you.
Also, just for clarification, this vote is to bring forward a resolution at our next meeting presenting option three with a. Um, I guess quotation in it to revisit the plan.
I thought we were just gonna vote on option three right now.
It has to be voted on by resolution. We don't have a resolution to present to you, so you'll have to vote on a resolution at the next meeting.
Okay.
Carter?
Yes.
Ellis?
No.
Gakin?
Yes.
Butchkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Newbo?
No.
Peratini?
No.
Fredo?
No.
That passed six before, Mr. Mayor, a resolution will be brought forward at the next meeting.
Okay, let's move on to.
Mr. Mayor. Um, may I, I'd like to make a motion that we um form. A great advisory committee that is at least made up of one member from each ward. To help guide um. Uh, deciding the impact on the rest of the budget, wouldn't that make a point? It doesn't have to be council members, it can be any one. Second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Aye.
My guys have it. No.
And if I may, that um, we look to our city administrator to help guide the, the development of them.
Trying to ask them that we already voted on?
No.
No. Is it? Okay.
Moving on to special agenda item, uh, we have some appointment. Um, I move, okay, well, to the people who are seat for, for, we have Cindy Sherman, Vanessa LaMolly, or LaVall. C R Johnson and Eric Utterback. I move that we adopt these appointments. Second.
They moved it second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, we have one more appointment to the Arts Commission, uh, Carol Cohen. I move that we adopt this um appointment. Second.
There any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. The passes. Alright, so now we'll go back to public comments. Please list your name and your, your campus or ward and keep it to three minutes, please.
Steve Haywood, Board Four. I know this probably isn't gonna save much money, but does the Finance Committee? Do they go through line by line when you're in committee to see what the charges on these credit cards are? I, I feel that some of these charges are kind of ridiculous. I found one. Uh, May eighth of twenty twenty-three from, and I hope they don't get mad at me, the Legal Department. For um, three hundred and seven dollars for some spa in Blaine. So, I Googled that spa. Beautiful lotions, stones on your back, rub downs. Spa, Jacuzzis. I'm just wondering why three hundred and seven dollars for a spa.
We are looking into that.
And there's a lot of charges for hotels and motels. Goodness sakes, the Hilton, that's a beautiful place to stay. I wouldn't mind staying in places like that. When I uh traveled around the country cleaning up hazardous waste, we stayed in some pretty dumpy places. Um, that our company paid for. Um, there's just a, a lot of charges and, you know, some of these. Places you have to go to, go to lectures or whatnot. Can you get these lectures on Zoom? Um, just, you know, a penny saved is a penny earned, you know, that's what I, I say. You gotta cut everywhere you can. And I really think that, looking over these uh credit card statements. Um, you know, there's charges to Starbucks that, Michael's in Lacey. Who is going up to Lacey and buying something at Michael's that you can't get on Amazon, you know, that. Cause I'm sure you're spending their, you're paying for their gas money to go up to Michael's in Lacey and then mess around. But it's just something to think about. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else?
Okay, one last, um, oh. I'm less Bolton, Board Four. Um, again. Try to ramp it up. And I, I, you know, I get that um betting on the con. You know, we're gonna get this new business in. It's just gonna turn the budget around. We can go ahead and, and figure that we're gonna make up that three million dollars because. We got some new businesses in downtown. That's not budgeting. You know, I, I. I've done budgeting, detailed budgeting, and, you know, you, you really, it's an art form. And. Again, being a citizen that lives in this community. I don't want big surprises. I'm not, if you're gonna raise my taxes, raise my taxes a little bit, you know, raise my taxes a little bit, raise my taxes a little bit and. And I'll adjust to it. Um, the idea that we're not gonna raise taxes because we've got some poor people. Set up a subsidy program for those people. Raise tax, I can afford the tax increase. Most of the people out here can afford the tax increase. How many people in Aberdeen are we actually talking about that can't make that increase? Set up a subsidy program. If you absolutely cannot make that increase, we'll pay the four dollars a week. But not, not a million dollars, because I don't need it. I can, I can make the tax increase right now and I'm ready to do that. Just go ahead and increase the taxes, I'll pay it. So will ninety-five percent of the people in this community. So, there's what, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of your problem resolved. And you set up a subsidy program for those people that can't afford it. And you help out those people. And, and that's gonna cost you less than your, um, than your guy that actually did all the study. Your consultant. Cause it's not gonna be thirty thousand dollars. It's, you're probably gonna wind up with a hundred people that really can't make that. So, don't burn the rest of us because you're trying to do something good for a hundred people. Let's do something different for a hundred people and help the rest of us just slowly make that increase. Thank you.
Kathy Thomas, Word five. Okay, I, I, I appreciate what you said, Doug. And I pray that, that you really mean it. Uh, I have reservations because you still are talking about a couple of people that you felt weren't going along with you and thinking your way. One of them being the council president. Uh, that totally gets no respect out of this administration. I mean, look at tonight, I asked, requested that she get her title, you know, deputy clerk, city administrator, fire chief. Director, Parks Director, City Council. She's the head of the legislature body. You guys are the ones that make the rules and regulations here, not you. You, you, you take what they do. And you see that it's administrative. But I wanna know why that we brought three things to the table to vote on. But it's just not good enough. They turned down three, one, they turned down two. So, three just isn't good enough. So, now we're gonna go ahead and we're just gonna hash that all over and we're gonna get a committee going. And we're gonna deal with another bureaucracy and we're gonna spend more time doing this because I didn't get my way. And I just don't think it's right. And then, like the fire chief said, it's gonna cost more in studies. And I wanna know, why are we paying two hundred and fifty thousand a year for a city administrator? We're paying for, we, we, okay, in October we will. Okay, I'm talking about total package, Doug. And that is paid, that she took that package in lieu of wages. It's the same thing as the dollar. It's a package in lieu of wages. Don't ever forget that. The taxpayers are paying that full package, okay? We've got directors that are, some of them are a hundred and sixty-seven thousand a year and I don't know what their benefits are. I think Roos are, are fringe or fifty-one thousand or something, so I'm assuming they're at two hundred thousand. Why are we paying these people, these kinds of wages when they can't even do the job? That they've gotta go out and re, and get sources elsewhere. I've worked in big companies, okay? We have those depart, we have a financial department. I know we don't have a financial head right now because you choose not to hire one. And, you know, there's a lot of reasons, but the job's still getting done. Nobody's indispensable. And when you, a company that's gonna make money, your first thing you have to cut is overhead. Your costs, your, your salaries are where it's at. Don't tell me we can't go backwards. We can. We can size down. That's how you, that's how you have to do it. We can't say, well, just expect it to raise. And I'm sorry, there are a lot of people that can't afford that twenty dollars a month. There are a lot of people, and that means a lot. But, you know, I, I feel bad for them, just like Mel was telling about his parents and stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Uh, Israel Tiedemann, Word six. I've got one comment and one idea. What about a, um, the idea is what about a, like, uh, take. We all know that, that Grace Harbor had an old trolley system. What about we take an old trolley, put it on a truck chassis? And you drive it around on the, where the old trolley used to go. And you, uh, you take and say, hey, this is where this guy did this and. Just tell them the history to all the, all the tourists that come in. That'll bring in some money, wouldn't it? And uh, I agree with you, Riley. Um, the buildings here are a lot worse than the ones in Iraq. Cause I feel you, I was there twice myself. And these cats that are just buying up buildings in Grace Harbor and sitting on them. No, this is our town, not theirs.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, prayers, sir.
Real quick, I just wanna. Add to this that when I was in the federal government, I was not financed. I was in prisons. And we were subject to budget cycles by Congress and we got. Shut down, we couldn't hire, there were freezes, there was reduction, they had all kinds of stuff and I did that for. Almost thirty years up and down, you know, sometimes Congress was real generous and gave us funds and then other times you're like, deal with it. So, you're not painting your buildings every year. You're not buying new vehicles. You're not, whatever it is, you, there's. Gonna be, government isn't always gonna have incoming flow. There's gonna be times when everyone has to tighten their belts. Don't, uh, when someone retires, you don't backfill them. Someone is fired, whatever. If there's uh vacancies in departments, sometimes they don't get filled. And that's unfortunate and if our economy is stronger, you can always revisit that and, and fill those positions. And please look at like, is Hope we are getting that, that new mill? And please look at, like, is Hope we are getting that, that new mill or whatever it is, that wood pellet mill, hundred zillion dollars? And I know it's the port. But if we could get some businesses on our side to generate income like Counselor Gaken is talking about, I'd really like to see that. I'd like to see us utilize our river, have a dock, have people in boats that come in that wanna, you know, yachty's, people that wanna, uh, replenish, because we have a deep water harbor that we're sitting on that we're not really fully utilizing. We're in a really good spot. Aberdeen's really unique. So I'd like to see, you know, bike trail along the river, you know, that's gonna entice people to wanna stop here. Stop at the brewery, stop at the art galleries, do all, there's a reason for them to come here and not just blast over to ocean shores or up north. So it, keep that in mind, you know, economically, if we can generate more income that way and less on the taxpayer, I'm hundred percent. And, you know, the mall, what is that doing? Nothing. So if they could generate, get, I know it's private, but talk to them as well. Get condos, get apartments. That land, I, I know it's a marsh, it's a duck pond out there, so they're gonna have to build it appropriately, but let's get more housing for low income. I'm good with that, but that big old mall is doing nothing. And that's in our, our sphere. So just suggestions, okay? I wanna see people wanna come to Aberdeen and spend money and then keep going to the coast, Westport or Ocean Shores. That'd be awesome. Alright, thank you very much.
Do you leave your, your name in?
Oh, Norm Klein, Ward three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd love to do the trolley.
Alright, so Michelle Mevere, I'm from Ward five, but I, I wanted to come up here and first of all, because last meeting, mayor gave a shout out to Aberdeen High School's band. Well, I need to give two shout outs to Harbor High because today we just had a mock trial. The kids took a case that was very, very public from the Seattle area. Just changed names and went through whatever trial would be like. They did fabulous. And last Thursday, I don't know if anybody was down and around Harbor High, but we had kids even down at our library doing community service. Rather than being in school, we did a day of service. Taught kids what it's like to go out and fall into their time.
Is there a graduation?
Next Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday. That will be given two scholarships away to you guys. Not, not the city, the Harbor. Did you, did you wanna say something?
It's my first meeting.
Okay.
I've only been a resident of Aberdeen my whole life. Um, Sandy Miller, uh, Ward three. I really came here tonight because I've been kind of on this mission of looking at other communities and what they look like and what Aberdeen looks like. And I actually did a drive around, a little walkabout, so to speak. How come Aberdeen's the only one that has a tent problem? There's none in Ocean Shores, there's none in Westport, there's none in Lonnie, there's none in Hoaklin. And yet it's a huge drain on our resources. They have that problem down there. Or anywhere. I mean, I lived, I used first cabin with my dog and now there's four RVs on it instead of one. And the guy by the methadone place, he's, he's moved out. That's good. But can somebody please tell me why we have the homeless and nobody else does? Why?
Bruce advised in Hoaklin here. He was made.
Yeah, we're, we're not really allowed to engage.
Okay, well, I'm thinking there should be a charge. Those other cities should be paying us to take care of the problem. And I'm a little bit, and if you're doing anything on EMS where citizens can come in and join, I really don't understand how we, do we get rid of nurse when our fire truck goes to fight a fire in Hoaklin and vice versa? Does that money ebb and flow? Yes, it does. That's a good answer. Thank you. So that's my concern. And as far as the twenty bucks a month goes, being a newly hired and fixed income, this is horrifying, being on a fixed income. Twenty bucks a month. You know, when you say twenty bucks a month, I look at it as two hundred and forty dollars a year. And that's it. And next, and it'll continue to go up. So I can't advocate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, uh, any, any, uh, council members with anything good to the order? Council personnel.
Um, I would invite Sandy to send me an email, give me a call. I'd love to talk with you further about, um, the things you have on your mind. Um, and and I, I appreciate Mr. Klein's vision of, um, developed waterfronts and thriving community. All of those things make investments. And those investments don't happen in an economy of scarcity. Um, as nice as a, as a trolley would be, um, how can we, how can we buy a trolley when we've got a fire truck we can't afford? Um, I I know that we, um, we do spend quite a bit of money on cleaning up after them. Yep. But, um, until we have a solution that allows us the legal ability to, um, to apply our laws or getting people to move on, our hands are tied. And we don't wanna be spending yet more money and being sued and having to go to court for, it would be the third time. Aberdeen's kind of unique that way. Um, Hoaklin doesn't have that history. Montesano doesn't have that history. And yet, many of those other cities are bringing people here and dropping them on. We know that. And
And you're welcoming it.
And I, I, um, I know that our mayor, uh, will be working with other mayors to see if we can get a mutual understanding. And I'd be all in favor of sending these cities a bill um, to help cover some of our costs. The other thing that we might wanna revisit is, um, the, the code that we passed on vacant buildings. Um, we set up a finance structure. Maybe that's getting their attention, but is it really getting us to where we want to be with, um, how many vacant buildings there are in town and, um, and how we might be able to help at least get those back on the marketplace so that people could buy them who really intend to invest in our community and not just hold out. So they could make money in the long run and give nothing back. That's no way to be a productive community member. So that's something else I'd like us to, to look at. Um, I think there are other things that we can look at as a council that address, um, things like affordable housing. Um, uh, it, it came up in the legislature last year but didn't get passed for this year. Um, whether to have allowed local communities to set, um, uh, increase maximums. Um, maybe given this environment with so many people being impacted by rising rents, the legislature will revisit that and, and give cities the ability to, um, to set rates that work for us so that people aren't driven out of their homes. And, and there's probably other things that we can look at that are helpful to our citizens. Um, and, and I, I know that on the finance committee, we do take a hard look at line items. Um, not in the meetings itself, but as our prep for the meetings. And, um, if, if you catch something that maybe we didn't, I know, I'd like to hear about it. It sounds like many of the things, um, Steve, that you brought up are being looked at and that's, that's as it should be. Um, we do need to make sure our policies reflect these lean times and, um, uh, and I know we can all use some encouragement and your continued support as we pull up our sleeves and try and make this work.
Thank you. Anybody else? A little bit.
Sorry, I just have a, um, quick request. Could we please make sure that we don't flag? Translated.
Yeah, we could go on the screen.
I think you say, um, uh, thank you to everyone that attends these meetings. Uh, we, we work for you guys, the public. So it's your voice that we need to hear. Because it's your voice that matters. And, um, hopefully we'll keep seeing more and more and more and more people showing up. Uh, yeah, it's, we, we're free of your watch, you know, we wanna see this place thrive. And, uh, so, thank you. Thank you.
Somebody make a motion?
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, the hotel that's in question, um, is not, it's actually the location of where a conference was held for our prosecuting attorney to attend. I don't know if you've ever been to Simeon, I don't know that there are many places up there. Um, but we did look into it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. And so, um, it's not for a day swap or anything like that. That's a name, it's like resort camp swap. Um, but that's the location that the conference was being held for our prosecuting attorney. So.
And I do. Yeah, they were actually talking about it this morning. Oh, okay, I didn't do it, yeah. Uh, anything else? You can make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion that we adjourn?
Go. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I've made an adjourn. Thank you for coming, everybody. Appreciate it.